Okay, we're live.
Please rise as you are able. I now call this meeting of city council to order.
We acknowledge this meeting is taking place on the traditional land of the Anishna beg people. The Anishna beg include the Odawa, Ojibwe and Barwatahemi nations collectively known as the Three Fires Confederacy. We're dedicated to honoring indigenous history and culture and committed to moving forward in the spirit of reconciliation and respect with all First Nations, Meti and Inuit people. Before we begin tonight and while we're still standing, I wanted to observe a moment of silence for those people who lost their lives at Roberta Place. I want to express councils deepest condolences. Our thoughts are with the families of those who lost their lives. They were grandparents. They were parents. They were friends and neighbors. And they were the elders in our community. We mourn their passing and our thoughts are with all those in Barry who are ill with COVID, regardless of their circumstances. But our thoughts are particularly tonight with the lives that have been lost at Roberta Place. Would you please observe a moment of silence with me? Thank you. You may be seated. So I do want to begin tonight as always by reminding everyone that due to the COVID-19 pandemic, city councils continuing to practice physical distancing. Members of council, the executive management team and the city clerk are participating via video conference. Members of the executive management team and city staff as well as our service partners who have part of their budget items or their budget items on tonight's agenda are there also here. If there are any questions that members of council may have as part of our deliberations. The first item on the agenda tonight is confirmation of the minutes. That is the minutes of the meeting held January 11th, the city council meeting. They've been circulated. Are there any corrections to the minutes from January 11th? Seeing none, minutes are adopted as printed and circulated. We do not have awards in recognition or reports from officers tonight. We do have two requests for deputations on the business plan, the 2021 business plan and budget specifically related to the Barry Police Services Board. Before we begin those councillor Harvey.
Thank your worship. In order to meet my legislative requirements under section 17 sub three of the Police Services Act, I will not participate in this discussion and I will turn off my cameras during the deputations in relations to this matter.
Thank you councillor Harvey. Madam Clerk, has councillor Harvey's interest been recorded?
Yes, Mary Lemon, it has. Would councillor Harvey also like to declare his conflict for the first motion as well? Since the Barry Police Budget Motion is right after deputations?
Yes, that would be the same declaration in relation to that matter also.
Okay, and that's section A of the General Committee Report. Madam Clerk, councillor Harvey's interest in section A has been recorded?
Yes, Mary Lemon, it has.
Thank you very much. Councillor Natalie Harris.
Thank you, Mary Lehman. In consultation with the Integrity Commissioner regarding my code obligations and those that arise under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, I do not have a pecuniary interest in this matter that requires me to abstain from voting on this matter. However, in accordance with my obligations under the Council and Committee Code of Conduct and the advice of the Integrity Commissioner, I will not be participating or voting on the foregoing matter.
Okay, and that is the deputations in section A of the General Committee Report as well.
Correct.
Okay. Madam Clerk, has councillor Natalie Harris's interest in both the deputations in section A been recorded?
Yes, Mary Lehman, they have.
Thank you very much. With that, I will call on our first deputant, who is Michael Spears. Mr. Spears.
Can you all hear me?
We can. Welcome to city council in accordance with our procedural bylaw. You have five minutes for your deputation. Welcome to council.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Lehman. Good evening councillors and staff. The past few months have put on display the fact that policing is failing our society, particularly black and indigenous people. It is bloated and archaic. When you have the majority of calls in the city being noncriminal and nonemergency, it's obvious that change is needed. We need to completely rethink policing in our city. Unfortunately, we're coming up short when it comes to creating this new vision. Things like the anti-racism tax force are valuable initiatives, and I'm sure there will be a lot of good that comes from it. But when people are facing an injustice, that injustice must be stopped immediately. The voices crying out for change shouldn't have to wait for better. We can do better now, and this better must include defunding the police. Last summer, we had hundreds of people in the streets of Barry demanding action and not just one, but two massive rallies. And the community expressed overwhelming support for reducing the police budget in the city's own online budget tool. And what does the community get from that? More money being wasted on body cameras and a tone deaf request for a budget increase. This is the exact opposite of what the community has been calling for. The status quo has failed, yet the status quo is exactly what council seems to want. Even maintaining the budget as is will only serve to keep policing as it is, which is a system that is better designed to create crime and label people as criminals. Policing is a system rooted in racism, settler colonialism, and the elevation of one class over the communities that our system has made vulnerable. It protects property, not people. We have a system of laws in this country, but not a true system of justice. And that's an important distinction. Our system doesn't let someone experiencing homelessness live in an empty apartment. But we have no problem using the police to enforce evictions even during a pandemic. Our system arrests the mother who is forced to steal bread to feed her family. But it does nothing to punish corporations who steal wages from their workers. A system that was rooted in true justice would be doing the exact opposite. But council could begin to create a shift immediately. Defunding the police with the goal of complete abolition is the solution. But it must be more about more than just reallocation of money. Defunding the police needs to be seen as a human rights issue. It's about how we as a society prioritize our services and how we treat each other. We must imagine our communities as places where everybody is supported and police and prisons are unnecessary. Overpolicing and over incarceration make our communities less safe because they take resources away from programs and services that actually prevent crime. If we cut the police budget in half, that would be a little more than $28 million. Imagine what we could do with $28 million a year. We can make massive investments in social housing and community programs, care for people experiencing homelessness, better the lives of our seniors, offer free transit, make the investments needed to fight climate change. The list can go on and on. The $3 million commitment for supportive housing we saw last week was welcome news, and I thank the mayor and councillors who supported it. But that should just be the start. Defunding the police would open up resources where the city could truly throw down the gauntlet and bring forward the bold action that is needed. Sure, other levels of government need to do more, but municipalities can do quite a lot on their own. As a community, we need to develop an abolitionist point of view and our punitive and carceral mindset and truly emphasize caring for one another. There's a mood for change in this city. Council may not see it, or they may choose to ignore it, but we won't stop fighting for it. So I beg you to reconsider the police budget. Mayor Lehman was quoted in the newspaper last week as saying, quote, "You can always find reasons not to do stuff. You can always sort of find threads that are loose and pull at them and decide the whole thing isn't worth doing," unquote. Now is not the time to be finding reasons not to reduce the police budget. It is worth doing, and now is the time to act. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your deputation. Are there any questions from members of council for the deputant? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Spears, thank you for being here. Our second deputant tonight is Amber Beckett on the same matter, the Police Services Budget. Ms. Beckett, welcome to council.
All right, can you hear me? I've called in through my phone and I know last time the internet connection wasn't great, so excellent.
Yeah, we can hear you.
I see you nodding. Wonderful. Firstly, I would like to say thank you so much for working together as a team and spending those crazy hours to get this budget together for us. I was up watching on YouTube and it was, it was a lot of time and I commend your dedication and your diligence in making sure that our tax increase was conservative amount and we had some really serious issues that you spoke on. So I just know that a lot of people come on here and they get straight to their complaints and I, and I wanted to give you a little bit of credit for the hard work that you do and appreciation that I think sometimes goes unnoticed. But I'm here because I did want to talk about the police budget and it's a little awkward knowing that Chief Green is here, but that's okay. I'm going to say what I have to say anyway. So it looks like you're going to approve their request for increase. And I am particularly disappointed that you're not even holding them to the same standard as the other partner organization. I was especially disappointed to see councillor's councillor Reema's motion fail, asking for them to be held to a maximum of 1.95 like everyone else. And to the, to the layperson, I, it seems like you all see the police as untouchable and you'll just give them whatever money that they ask for, and I really hope that that's not the case. But when things like this happen, that's the impression that I was given. So I know that the city of Barry is a corporation and any corporation should be able to go to a department that they oversee and ask them to come back with what a five to 10% decrease in funding would look like. And you didn't even ask them. And I just can't wrap my head around why. I listened to your arguments. I listened to the discussion and it still just isn't making sense to me. So knowing the results of the, the user voice that I worked on in July and the budget allocator tool that, that the city made as an option for people, it feels like, and you'll have to excuse my analogy because it doesn't really work during COVID time, but if the Go Train asked us, okay, where do you want to go? Where do you want to travel? And we purchased tickets heading to Northern Ontario. We want to go remote. We want to go far, up as far as we can. And Go Train that said, that's great. Thank you for your input. We get on the train and they're taking us to Hamilton. We've asked as a city, we've had hundreds of people have asked for the place budget to be decreased and you gave them an increase and it just doesn't fit well with me. So the police budget was under 42 million in 2011 and now it's over 57 million. That's a 37% increase in 10 years. Mayor Lehman, you said that it has to increase because our population is increasing. Our population is not increasing that fast. I had the pleasure of speaking with many of you in the past few months and most of you have agreed that we should be supporting social and health services. And I'm wondering what's changed since then. Like what has been done, other than the $3 million housing initiative, which I think is fantastic, what has been done to relieve the pressure on the police with all these calls that they're facing? I know Michael just mentioned the majority of the calls that they attend to aren't criminal in nature and they're not even emergencies. What can we do to relieve the pressure on them? Have you gotten a breakdown beyond just it not being criminal and not being emergencies? What types of call it is? Maybe we can make bylaw officers 24/7, 365. I know they work through the night in the winter, giving out parking tickets for people on the road. Why can't that happen all year round? Noise complaints by their very nature tend to happen at night. It doesn't make sense that bylaw officers aren't working at night, and I think that could help. Mental health response would be another good place to start. So like I said, the $3 million housing initiative, I think that's a fantastic start. But I would like to remind you that's only half of a percent of what the police get. So unchecked, I believe that the police budget will continue ballooning and will cut off necessary flow of resources to other organizations like the library who despite the public calling for an increase to their funding, you decrease their budget by over a quarter of a million dollars. So in closing, the police already have 20% of our total funds. How much more of the pie do you want to give to them? The organizations that can help relieve the pressure that they're under, they're scrambling, looking for crumbs right now. One of your strategic priorities as a council is to offer innovative and citizen-driven services. And I'd like to offer to you this as an opportunity to put our money where your mouth is. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your deputation, Ms. Beckett. Are there questions of the deputant from members of council? Okay, I had, I had one. Ms. Beckett, I know you made deputations to us and to the Police Services Board. I mean, you know, my views on this that we need, we do need to invest in the alternative response before we are able to reduce police funding. I know we may not agree on that. But I think where we do agree is the need for investment in alternative service delivery. In the work that you have done, and I know you have done a fair amount of research, where would you point city councils being the first priority for that alternative service? I mean, you talked about bylaw and so forth. We have certainly been working to make investments in housing and supportive housing. In your experience in other cities, where would you see the priority?
Well, I would actually ping this back to you and ask what have you as a council done? You've agreed that this is important. You're the one with all of the information about what's going on in our city. I don't think it's fair to ask me to do your work for you.
I would never do that. Our investment though has prioritized supportive housing and I thought I'd give you the opportunity to let us know if you in your research had other priorities that you feel we should be pursuing.
As I mentioned in my deputation, I think that housing is great. I think bylaw officers are a quick way to get a lot of the calls off of their plate. Based on the little information I have, they haven't been very forthcoming about what the types of calls that they have to attend to are. They don't get into the specifics. But mental health is, mental health and addictions are another huge thing that are upstream of a lot of what I think we're facing as a city right now.
Okay, thank you very much.
Is that in your question?
It does. Thank you for that.
Great.
Are there any other questions of the deputant? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Beckett. That completes our deputations for this evening. We have no tax application or communication matters. Brings us to the committee reports and we will deal with the police budget. First of all, Deputy Mayor Ward, go ahead.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Thompson. The section A of the General Committee Report dated January 18, 2021 is circulated to be adopted.
Thank you. It is moved by Deputy Mayor Ward and seconded by councillor Thompson. That section A of the General Committee Report dated January 18th, 2021 is circulated to be adopted. Comments or questions? Okay, seeing none. I will call the question on section A. Those in favor, please indicate. Opposed? One that carries. Section B, please. Deputy Mayor Ward.
Councillor Harvey and councillor Harris back in.
Yeah. Sorry councillor Natalie Harris, councillor Harry back in. Good. Go ahead.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Thompson. The section B of the General Committee Report dated January 18th, 2021 is circulated to be adopted.
Thank you. It's moved by deputy mayor, deputy mayor Ward and seconded by councillor Thompson. That's section B of the General Committee Report dated January 18th, 2021 is circulated be adopted. This is the 2021 business plan with the exception of the police budget and the amendment on the Besker Street project, which are going to be done separately. And there is a motion to separate another section as well. Sorry, Deputy Mayor Ward, did you just, was that the separation motion or the, that was the basic, the introduction, right? Yeah, okay. So we'll, we'll then do that amendment to, to separate section, I believe it's one L. So it's moved by Deputy Mayor Ward, seconded by councillor Thompson. That's section B of the General Committee Report as circulated to be adopted. Before we deal with the balance of the amendments, can we deal with separating the one section? Go ahead Deputy Mayor Ward.
I am looking for it. I'm not sure if I have it.
I've got it here.
I can imagine it be moved by myself, seconded by councillor Thompson, that I'm not sure what section it is in that though. What part of it? It says about the school crossing guards?
Correct.
Okay. I only have the motion to amend it. I don't have the actual. I'm guessing something. I just don't have the motion.
Madam Clerk.
Um, it was sent in your package councillor Ward, but I'd be happy to read it for you if you'd like.
Is it the third, should it be the third one that's on the sheets?
It's page eight on the sheets.
Oh.
If you're looking at the blue and white motions, it's on page two.
Oh.
Yeah, sorry. I'm on page two of the, of the motion sheets.
Is this, is this the one that paragraph one, okay, sorry.
Yes.
Okay, got it now. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Thompson, that paragraph one. Is it one L or I? One L of motion 21G06 of section B of the General Committee Report dated January 18th, 2021 concerning the 2021 business plan to be separated and reintroduced to section D. Motion 21G008 School Crossing Guard Program.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Ward, seconded by councillor Thompson, that paragraph one L of motion 21G006 of section B of the General Committee Report dated January 18th, 2021 concerning the 2021 business plan to be separated and reintroduced as section D. Motion 21G008 School Crossing Guard Program. This is a motion to separate. Madam Clerk, is this a matter on which conflict issue would arise or because it's procedural, it does not?
I would just on the air on the side of caution for councillors Harvey and Natalie Harris to declare their conflicts again.
Understood. Sorry that you had to come back in for the main motion and the First Amendment you got to declare on, but go ahead councillor Harvey.
Thank your worship. And again, in order to meet my legislative requirements under section 17 sub three of the Police Services Act, I will not participate in this vote or discussion on this matter.
Thank you, madam clerk. Has councillor Harvey's interest been recorded?
Yes, Mary Lehman, it has.
Thank you councillor Natalie Harris.
Thank you, Mary Lehman. In consultation with the Integrity Commissioner regarding my code obligations and those that arise under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, I do not have a pecuniary interest in this matter that requires me to abstain from voting on this matter. However, in accordance with my obligations under the Council and Committee Code of Conduct and the advice of the Integrity Commissioner, I will not be participating or voting on the foregoing matter.
Thank you, madam clerk. Has councillor Natalie Harris's interest been recorded?
Yes, Mary Lehman, it has.
Okay, on the amendment to separate paragraph one L, are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, those members of council in favor, I'll call the question. Those in favor of separating that paragraph? Anybody opposed to that? None? That carries. Okay, that'll be reintroduced as section D after we deal with all of the other budget related amendments. So just before we move into those amendments, because I know there are a number that have been circulated on section B. I did want to clarify something that was brought up in the deputations and it's, it is, it's unfortunate because whenever we do budgets in the format that they're in, it's very difficult to compare apples and oranges, but just for the record and I, I asked Mr. Miller about the amended amount for the library. As the budget stands right now, the Police Services Council has approved by way of section A, a 2.65% increase. As it stands in section B, which is on the floor, the library has approximately a 7% increase. And that is associated with opening a holly branch. The county is asking for a 3.2% increase. And I think we know the reasons for their costs, a number of them long-term care. The departments in this budget were at approximately 3.3%. What changes those numbers and gets us down to a much lower number is then there is growth in the city and population growth translates to assessment growth, which translates to new revenue. So that offsets all of those service partner budget increases. But just because, I wanted to be clear because I did note some confusion because of the amendments made last week that because there was a reduction to the library budget, but not any other service partner budgets, that they were receiving a lower increase. In fact, that is not the case. And their increase was reduced, but it does stand at the moment at a 7% year-over-year increase so that we can build a new branch library. Okay, so I will now take amendments on section B. A number of these were circulated and the first one actually does have to do with the library. I thought members of council, I'd go through these in the order that the clerk has distributed them, which I believe is also the order of the sections in the report. So first we're dealing with amendments to section B. The first one that was circulated is by councillor Jim Harris and councillor Rob Thompson regarding the library unspent dollars. Councillor Jim Harris, go ahead.
Thank you, Mary Lehman. So yes, it's amendment BPL, unspent dollars and it's put on the floor by me and seconded by councillor Thompson. And it reads that motion 21G006 of section B of the General Committee Report dated January 18th, 2021 concerning the 2021 business plan to be amended in a paragraph at 2E as follows, "By deleting the words 'be transferred to the Tax Rate Stabilization Reserve' and replacing them with 'be allocated to library materials and that the Barry Public Library Board be requested to consider the purchase of digital resources as its primary focus." And I can speak to that if you'd like. Thank you.
Sorry, I was on mute. Thank you very much councillor Jim Harris. It's moved by Jim councillor Jim Harris, seconded by councillor Thompson, that motion 21G6 of section B of the General Committee Report be amended by amending paragraph 2E as follows, "By deleting the following words, 'be transferred to the Tax Rate Stabilization Reserve' and replacing them with 'be allocated to library materials and that the Barry Public Library Board be requested to consider the purchase of digital resources as its primary focus." Go ahead councillor Harris.
Thank you, Mary Lehman. And first off, thank councillor Congal for speaking with me today. I really appreciated having a conversation about this. And you mentioned the library and the exciting opportunity to add a third library site, which I think is, is wonderfully located. And the, the presentation from Ms. Jessup and Mr. Mitchell was really interesting and over the past year, the, the incredible increase in membership was one of those, you know, incredible outcomes from COVID and, and all the things that have been done to, to get the resources to our community. It just seemed, and I really appreciated the sensibility of the original motion, but I, I was thinking that this really was an opportunity to, you know, if there was unspent dollars, to really invest them back into materials to all of those new members that are, that have gained library passes and memberships in the past year. So that was really the simple motivation, also recognizing in previous presentations from our library leaders of how expensive it is to access digital copies of things and how their time limit and then we sent a letter in support of those efforts. I think it was a national effort related to those type of copyrights and challenges. So anyway, that was really the motivation and I hope members will support this investment in materials for all those new members and current members of our libraries. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Harris. Any comments on this amendment? Okay, seeing none, I'll call. Okay, seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of the amendment, please indicate. None are opposed. That passes unanimously. Thanks very much, Counselors Harrison Thompson. The Second Amendment is also with regards to the Berry Public Library, Counselor Gary Harvey and Counselor Rob Thompson have this one. Go ahead, Counselor Harvey.
Thank you, your worship. Moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Thompson. That motion 21G006 of section B of the General Committee Report dated January 18th and January 19th, 2021, concerning the 2021 business plan be amended in paragraph 2B as follows, by deleting 132, 131 and replacing it with 117, 543.
Okay, thank you. It's moved by Counselor Gary Harvey and seconded by Counselor Rob Thompson, that motion 21G6 of section B of the General Committee Report dated January 18th, 2021, concerning the 2021 business plan to be amended in paragraph 2B as follows, by deleting the amount of 132, 131 and replacing it with 117, 543. I'm guessing there's a story here. Counselor Gary Harvey, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, your worship. Yes, in further discussions with representatives from the library, there was a slight error in the motion from last week. So this is a slight incremental increase of $14,588, which in the big scheme of things translates into 0.005 of a percent to ensure that we're looking at a Q3 start for the Holly branch.
Sorry, that's an increase or a decrease?
It's actually, it's actually an increase because the the motion from last week was to further decrease it. So that's why the amount, the amount is actually less, which in turn is giving them the additional funds, which is in line with exactly 50% of what their projected staffing costs are.
Good. Okay, so it's restoring 15,000 of the amount that was reduced last week. Thank you very much, Counselor Harvey. Are there any comments or questions on this amendment? Okay, seeing none, I thank you, Counselor Harvey and Thompson for working with the library so closely on the on the cost for this branch. I'll call the question, those in favor of the amendment? Any opposed? None? That carries unanimously. Thank you, members of council. Amendment three is to do with the capital plan and permanent traffic calming. It is moved by Counselor McCann and seconded by Counselor Rob Thompson. Counselor McCann, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Lehman and the rest of the counselors. So the amendment reads as follows, it's moved by myself and it's seconded by Counselor Robert Thompson, that motion 21G006, section B of the General Committee Report dated January 18th, 2021, concerning the 2021 business plan be amended by adding the following section to paragraph 11. That funding for capital projects 001048, permit permanent traffic calming measures at page 233 be increased by an additional $100,000 for each 2021 and 2022 to be funded from the tax capital reserve for the purpose of adding two additional locations for permanent speed cushions per ward. That staff in the infrastructure development report back before the end of February 2021 on the use of concrete versus asphalt for permanent speed cushions, including cost and durability.
Okay, thank you very much. It's moved by Counselor McCann, seconded by Counselor Thompson, that motion 21G6, section B of the General Committee Report dated January 18th, 2021, be amended by adding the following section to paragraph 11, that funding for capital project 1048, permanent traffic calming measures on page 233 be increased by $100,000 each in 2021 and 2022 to be funded from the tax capital reserve for the purpose of adding two additional locations for permanent speed cushions per ward. Also, that staff in the infrastructure department report back before the end of February 2021 on the use of concrete versus asphalt for the permanent speed cushions, including cost and durability. Go ahead, Counselor McCann.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Lehman. I won't be too long. I think that the the motion prepared by our clerk is pretty self-explanatory. I will add that I do believe I asked the question last week or the week before, you know, traffic, you know, how serious of an issue? Or maybe I'll take the word serious out, and how many complaints do ward counselors get about traffic issues? And I do believe unanimously, everybody said that the number one issue that the City of Barry has right now, with maybe the exception of Ward Two, is speed on our our streets. And so I do understand that staff are looking for concrete. I obviously, concrete is more durable than asphalt. But I just wanted to maybe get a little more information from our staff, from our directors, from our general manager, just comparing the alternative to asphalt towards concrete. I believe asphalt will be at worst half the cost and at best maybe one-third the cost. So therefore, we wouldn't have to change any funding that was approved last Monday, but the result would be maybe two or three extra speed cushion, speed bumps, permanent speed bumps that may have a a small life expectancy of 20, 25 years instead of concrete at 40 years. And I just wanted a little more information so we could solve the problem today instead of waiting, you know, over the next 10 years. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor McCann. Comments, questions? Counselor Natalie Harris.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. Just be super quick. I absolutely support this. Been waiting for this for a long time, actually. I'm glad that you brought it forward, even though we're trying to you know, obviously look at all the numbers so closely, but this isn't, this is needed, this is necessary, and I support this.
Thanks, Counselor Harris, Counsel, Deputy Mayor Ward and Counselor Congal.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. Just to the move for the motion, just so there's no misunderstanding, is this additional speed cushions or permanent speed cushions? In other words, they will replace the temporary ones we have, or will those these be put in places we don't have temporary ones or move the temporary ones to new locations? So in other words, are we adding speed bump locations to the wards?
Counselor McCann.
Through you, Mayor Lehman. Fantastic question, Deputy Mayor Ward. I think that's going to be following our decision. I mean, if you're asking me where I think that they should go, I definitely would want to replace the temporary ones that we have right now. You know, but I think that ward per ward could actually micromanage that. I know that's not really part of our job, but in this case, we could micromanage where the speed cushions go to replace. And I'm in favor of the permanent. So I I don't mean to be give you a political answer and give you a wishy-washy answer. I guess the answer is, I think that ward by ward, you can make that decision yourself. I know permanently myself, the speed cushions are at the busiest and I believe the highest risk, and I will definitely be replacing them with permanent speed bumps. And just remember, when you're processing this, if you think this is a good idea or not, it costs more to install the speed cushions than the actual speed cushions itself. So.
Well, that's actually gets to my question. I can just follow that up. So I, for example, I have speed cushions on Hammer Street. If I put permanent ones in there to the current temporary speed cushions, do I move them to another location or do they get retired?
Well, you know, you're kind of getting further down the rabbit hole than than I was prepared to maybe answer. I was going to rely maybe on our our specialists, but if you're asking my opinion, um, that's a good question. I mean, it's if it costs more than the actually cost to to purchase, I would have to see the numbers and we'd have to make a decision, I guess, collectively as a council. I believe that'd be a separate issue. So just so we're clear here, we've already allotted the money. There's no new money we're spending here. We're just taking a smaller amount of concrete permanent measures. And if my intuition is correct and my my resources are correct, we'll be able to have three times, if not double, the amount of speed cushions and we could get those in right away. Is that clear, Ms. Mudd?
Yeah, maybe we could have clarification when the report comes back on the concrete versus asphalt. We can have that.
That's really what, how I wanted to start the discussion, Deputy Mayor Ward, is let's, like, instead of guessing, right, let's figure out, you know, is it one-third the cost, is it half the cost? Or is it the same cost, right? And then we can make an educated decision moving forward. That's all I wanted to do. And I and I asked the clerk to make sure that we get the answer, which I think you already have the answer back in the next four weeks. So there's no delay in the spring, because that's the last thing I'd want to do is delay any of the safety procedures for the spring.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Thompson want the answer as well.
Yeah, I was just about to say, Counselor Thompson, did you want to add something?
Thanks, Mayor Lehman. Through you to Deputy Mayor Ward. So basically, what we would hope to do, we've already allocated the money. It's just, I think we can get more bang for our buck with asphalt. Both have their ups and downs. But they're permanent. So and another thing, too, they can actually be applied on a bus route opposed to the temporary ones because they're bolted in. You don't want large vehicles driving over them because the the anchors actually loosen, so it makes it unsafe. So the end result would be that you could replace, like, we have 10 temporary and over time, we could eliminate and just go fully with the permanent one. So that would be my view on it. As we increase the permanent, we eliminate the temporary, you know, to mitigate some of the cost.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Thompson. Counselor Congal.
Thank you, your worship. And Counselor Thompson answered part of my question. So should it be within this motion, just for the staff report back, it's was my understanding that there were considerations around which roads were prioritized depending on the infrastructure. So it would be great to understand from a concrete versus asphalt in itself, but also overall if a permanent structure permits us to be placing the speed cushions in other areas that may have been reconsidered based on height and impact with bus routes. It's my assumption based on this, then I'll note that this is an added resource and not eliminating the eight temporary speed cushions per ward. If that is positioned anywhere in here, I'll ask that it be clarified, but I can say it would be a welcome addition of concrete or asphalt permanent ones, because I think in the last three years, half of our speed cushions have been allocated in the same spot. And so we've seen some good data brought back from staff that have really pointed to how do we make this more equitable around access to traffic concerns across the ward. So great, great approach and looking forward to the report back, but do you hope staff can bring that lens? If if there are roads, we need to be clear with our constituents, have an impact on where the permanent ones go.
Okay, thank you very much, Counselor Congal. Counselor Thompson, did you wish to speak to this anymore? Or did we get your point before?
Yeah, pretty much. I was just looking for some clarity. To be honest, it's, it works out to about three to one on cost, provided you don't get fancy with paints. There's a shark tooth that they put on it, which can run very expensive. So it all depends on that. But yeah, it, my point was made earlier. Thank you.
All right. And thanks very much, Counselor Thompson. Any other comments or questions on this amendment? Counselor Owen.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. I think I just need some clarity quickly before we vote, because I'm very much supportive. But I unclear whether we're increasing by $100,000 for 2021 and 2022, because I might have heard, and I think I might have misheard, that we are keeping the funding the same. So just need some clarity there and what we're actually moving on. Sorry.
Sure. So the amendment reads that the project be increased in each of these two years. So my understanding, and I'll look to the movers, was that we are increasing the spending on it by $100,000 each year. New money. Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yep, okay. Any other comments or questions on the amendment? Seeing none. Oh, Counselor Harvey, go ahead.
I just wanted to add in that I'm definitely supportive of this. I'm glad this is the way our discussion has now gone. And I guess the big thing for the home game, because people are probably hearing $100,000 each year, is that this would come from reserve funds, so it wouldn't affect the tax rate. I assume I'm correct in that, Counselor McCann? Great, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Harvey. Any further comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of the amendment, please indicate. Any opposed? None? That carries unanimously as well. Move on to our Fourth Amendment. It is from Counselor McCann and seconded by Counselor Harvey. It is with regards to the Riverwood Park Parking Lot. Counselor McCann.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. This amendment is to the Riverwood Parking Lot. As you said, it's moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Harvey. That motion 21G006 of section B of the General Committee Report dated January 18th, 2021, concerning the 2021 business plan be amended in paragraph 11J as follows, by removing the following wording, including construction of a parking lot at Riverwood Park by the end of 2022 and replace it with that staff and Parks and Forestry Branch meet with the owner of the Kozlov Center to discuss the allotment of parking lot spaces for patrons of the Riverwood Park.
Okay, thank you. It's moved by Counselor McCann, seconded by Counselor Harvey, that motion 21G6 of the General Committee Report dated January 18th, be amended in paragraph 11J as follows, by removing the following wording, include construction of a parking lot at Riverwood Park by the end of 2022 and replacing it with that staff in the Parks and Forestry Branch meet with the owner of the Kozlov Center to discuss the allotment of parking spaces for patrons of Riverwood Park. Counselor McCann.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. I will try to be real quick on this. This is not an amendment that I'm necessarily going to die on the hill for. But I process this quite a bit and I listened to Deputy Mayor Ward last week. And I listened to his concerns. I listened to Council Morales's concerns about putting a parking lot in a park. And I understand the Deputy Mayor Ward's comments were it's a dirt parking lot, but you know, it's a parking lot. Then I started doing a bit of research and correct me if I'm wrong, Deputy Mayor Ward or staff or Mayor Lehman, or probably start with Mayor Lehman first, and then Deputy Mayor Ward or staff. When we had the the group gardens over behind the Bayfield Mall, behind the hotel, where San Diego Park is, we're not people parking in the Bayfield Mall and walking across that street to get to the park?
Yes, and that's why a parking lot was built there. There is a parking lot for those community gardens that was constructed on the same side of the road as the gardens.
Yeah, no, thank you for that. And that's where I was going. And I just thought for the very first community garden, we've, I reached out to the owner of the Kozlov Center, a great guy named Ron McCallan. And I just told him the situation, said it's the first year, we're going to have a community garden. We don't know what the what the, you know, the the use is going to be. And I thought for the first year, maybe we can not build a parking lot in a park and maybe we can lease the parking spaces off Ron. And I think a council member said they may cost $2,000 per parking lot. So I said to myself, well, you know, we probably need between five and 10, I would think. So that would be maybe a cost of $20,000. And Ron said, well, how does $1 a year cost for all 10 spots? So I said to him, well, with this council, I'm not sure if that's actually going to pass, but I thought I'd put an amendment to see if for the first year, at a cost of a dollar for 10 spots, that we would start the community parking, the community garden, put a dirt road where people who felt that they needed to unload and 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 load closer to the the actual garden itself, we'd be able to gauge how many how many people slash residents were using this community garden and and then we could gauge if we needed a parking lot. Secondly, if if this fails, then I would still like to see city staff reach out to Ron, because I do understand that is not just about this community garden. I was discussing this with a another council member this week and, you know, made a good point about there being soccer, tennis, pickleball, lots of frisbee games. You know, I don't travel past that park often. But when I do, I do see a lot of people using the parking lot. And I'm sure that if we build this parking lot and have a community garden, that's going to add to the complexity or the amount of people at the parking lot, which would entail us to use the Kozlov. You know, Ron's basically giving it to us for, or Mr. McCallan's basically giving it to us for free, a dollar a year. So I'll leave it at that and answer any questions. I think I've been pretty pretty direct. If anybody has extra questions and we have to answer.
Okay, thanks, Counselor McCann. Those who wish to speak on the amendment. Counselor Thompson, then Deputy Mayor Ward.
Through you, Mayor Lehman, to Ms. Peters. Finally.
Go ahead.
Ms. Peters, if we enter into a lease agreement, no matter the cost and a vehicle's damaged, are we liable because it now becomes our property?
Through you, Mayor, to Counselor Thompson. It normally, if we entered into a lease arrangement, there would probably be Through you, Mayor, to Counselor Thompson. It um normally if we entered into a lease arrangement, there would probably be provisions uh as to who uh would uh who would pay for uh insurance for negligence. So um I mean, none of this has been discussed, but but certainly with respect to the city's uh responsibility, uh that could um be addressed in insurance provisions in in the lease arrangement.
Perfect. If I could follow up, just another one on whether the we determine the road busy or not, um some of Deputy Mayor Ward's, and I don't want to take his questions away, but by directing somebody across the road, if there was ever an accident, does that make us more liable when people cross the road on their own, not directed by city or staff? I I imagine the answer is yes, but just if you could give us the legal.
Through you. There there are ways of mitigating any potential. Uh first of all, I wouldn't think it was uh directing. There could be signage. Um all of this is um is not bulletproof. Uh signs to use at your own risk, um you know, warnings of cautions and and so on and so forth. There there is, however, risk in um in in doing anything proactive. I mean, we are, we are now involved. We uh often become a target, at least at the outset. Um we um and and that's the case where we have parking lots anywhere.
With all due respect, signs are great. The car wash says that if they damage my car, they don't fix it. But you know, and I know they do. So it's just for people not to file claims. So the so there is a risk of like slip and falls and stuff like that, tripping because we've entered into a a lease agreement.
We accept a certain amount of responsibility by providing the the service to our to our residents, to our users. Every case is determined on its own uh on its own merits. And then depending on uh the lease agreement, there would be insurance backstop.
Perfect. Thanks.
Thanks, Counselor Thompson and Deputy Mayor Ward.
Uh thank you, Mayor Lehman. Uh when the the um community garden was built at Colter Street, where there was no parking lot, I had a call from a an older gentleman in his very first year, called me to say he actually lived in nearby apartments. And he said, to get there, there's a curb cut at that corner. And my wheelchair cannot get up. It it's it's crumbling. I wonder if you could have that fixed, so my wheelchair can get up there. So I thought, wow, that's sounds like a good problem to solve. So it sounds easy enough. So I called up our roads department, asked them to fix the curb cut. They got back to me and said, we didn't fix the curb cut. We got rid of it because people, we do not want to encourage for liability reasons. We do not want to encourage people to cross in mid block. In fact, I had to call up this gentleman and say, you know that curb cut you wanted me to fix? I actually got it eliminated. Probably the worst phone call I've ever had to make. Um and that is this. So that's what we're facing here. We're gonna put a parking lot across a fairly busy street from where the people are going, either for tennis, um soccer, or for their community garden. Um and I I think it's wrong. We 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 should have a parking lot at least beside where they're going to go. We shouldn't, people shouldn't have to cross the street, whether they're older, younger kids, uh middle aged, they shouldn't have to cross the street to get to your activity. And the other reason is, is that parking lot is so far away. First of all, people can park there now. I'm sure people that are playing tennis are parking at the Kozlov Center, but we're not giving, we're not, we're not actually, we're not condoning it. So there's a difference. The other thing is, that parking lot is quite a ways away. Chances are, anybody going to the community garden is gonna park on Heather, they're gonna park on Dome, they're gonna park on Lilian. They're not gonna park over in the Kozlov Center and walk all the way over there with their gardening things. They're just gonna park at the closest place, which is on the street nearby. We have a parking lot in the park, they'll park in the parking lot. So I'd encourage us to defeat this motion and uh we'll put the original, we'll have the original back on. By the way, I want to point out that the the motion doesn't say the garden would have to be built until two thousand and twenty two. So we will give it a year and see what happens. See what kind of things happen this year, where people are parking, if it's if it creates a problem for neighbors, that sort of thing. We will have a year at least to see what it'll be. I don't think the parking lot, I put it in two thousand and twenty two on purpose because I don't think staff is gonna be able to scramble it because they already had the program for what they're gonna do this year. Thanks.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor Ward. Just a procedural reminder to everybody as we move through these amendments. We're at City Council now, so it is uh you can speak to the item once for up to five minutes and then we'll call the question. The next I have on my list is Counselor Natalie Harris and then Counselor Morales.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. Um I'm just using my experience as well as a new community gardener. The one, you know, if you're playing tennis, then you bring your equipment. Um and you kind of know what you're preparing for and you'll bring it all in one load. But uh I've found that with gardening, that's not necessarily the case. Especially if you have, you know, you have tools, you have plants, you have, there's just so many things. Another thing is that it as it as it grows, as the community garden grows, then you just, you need more of it. So I think it would be inconvenient and also not safe because it wouldn't just be one trip, we drop it off. That's not, that's just my experience anyways. I know even in the one beside Eastview, um it was even a far walk from that parking lot to the community gardens. Um and you know, you're tempted to kind of drive up on the grass because you have a full vehicle of things that you need to unload. So again, that's my very limited knowledge of community gardening that I do love now. It's just not feasible. And and I really think too, if we're encouraging children to participate in the gardening, which we absolutely do, um the parents, if the, you know, for safety reasons, if they're dropping the kids off, then the the parent would have to leave and go across the road again and get more equipment. It just is a lot of questionable things instead of just bringing your tennis racket and whatever you need in your your gym bag. It's a lot more complicated. So unfortunately, I won't be saying yes to this.
Thanks, Counselor Harris. Uh Counselor Morales.
Uh thank you, Mayor Lehman. Um a lot of these issues that we face this budget, um we've been really good at being innovative. Uh we've pushed the envelope, whether it be through service delivery for Holly, whether it be through funding sources. I implore council to be innovative with this one. Like this, again, I respect the comments I've heard, but this one's so cut and dry for me, like how innovative that um we literally had Counselor McCann say, okay, didn't get the support last week, make the phone calls, reach out to our partners, uh that being the owners of the Kozlov Mall, say, yeah, we'll put pen to paper. We'll do a legality of it instead of just having an informal process um of people kind of parking there. And we're willing to shoot that down to literally rip up parkland to put a parking lot of some sort. It just, i- i- it frustrates me that we seem to just kind of be following that instead of being innovative. If if what I'm hearing, and we're not implementing those till two thousand and twenty two, um let's see how it goes. Uh the the argument of it's not safe for some of the garden people because they have heavier tools and, you know, the tennis soccer players already kind of crossed the road and take a chance. The logic of that argument is, it's either already unsafe for everybody and we're trying to blind eye to it, or we're gonna go through a formal uh uh lease process with proper insurance. The argument of more or less liability, that that's a moot argument. At that point, let's just never do any private partnership, public partnerships ever again. So that argument doesn't really stand. So let's wait that year and and look at this approach. Again, I'm also not a fan of parking, but I'm also not a fan of empty parking. And considering the Kozlov Mall would, there's like zero instances of the year um where it gets at even close to a hundred percent capacity. This is not Georgian Mall. Now, we're not even talking Boxing Day or December twenty third. To get rid of some 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 parkland and maybe a couple of trees, it is frustrating for me. I don't know if it was an email that I got from a workforce resident or maybe some comments online, but even some of the residents themselves said like, you know, we we don't want this. Um so I'll be supporting the amendment. Any council member who, again, this is not something they're they're dying on the sword, they're kind of listening to both sides. Let's try this approach, see how it works. It's a sensible approach and move forward. If if um, you know, the data and the feedback we get from residents is that we need this, then we can do this properly um in two thousand and twenty two. Um I don't know too many parking lots that get ripped up and trees replanted uh at full size. So I don't want to jump the gun on this one. If this fails, I think what this really speaks to members of council is, maybe this is the wrong location. And I'm looking here at the list for the 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 locations are being consulted the next couple of weeks are Riverwood, uh Batto and Lamplin Lane. The other two make sense. They have critical mass, there's lots of people around them, et cetera, et cetera. I think what I'm hearing or the fact we were, we even had this conversation this long, these two weeks, is this is not a good location uh to maybe have this. So maybe it's just, we're trying to kind of, you know, to borrow the words of uh then Counselor Bressard, we're trying to fit a square, a square peg in a round hole and just put it you know, in in a location that's not properly designed to have it. I'm not saying the residents of this area don't deserve it. I'm just saying there are logistical issues here uh that don't pass my personal value proposition test. So I'll be supporting the amendment. We I'm, we've done very innovative approaches to this. We're putting a frickin' library in a in a in a in a plaza. So let's uh let's continue the innovative uh streak here and um, you know, even even reconsider since, you know, if as as I heard from Deputy Mayor Ward, there may not even be time to do this one in two thousand and twenty one, then maybe we can maybe look to see if we can explore to find better so better locations in the nearby area um that can deliver this in a safer manner that doesn't involve putting a parking uh area in a park.
Thanks, Counselor Morales. Um counselors who haven't spoken yet, I have Counselor Harvey and Counselor Owen.
Thank you, Your Worship. Um my first question would be for Ms. Peters, and it's a little bit of a follow up on uh what Counselor Thompson was asking. Um now, when we look at it from a liability perspective, uh whether we go the route that Counselor McCann is proposing here with this with this amendment and and uh having people park at the Kozlov, or if we do go and build a parking lot here, is the liability really any different when it comes to the city, when it comes to things like slip and falls and and such forth? Wh- what's your perspective on that?
Through you, Mayor, to Counselor Harvey. With respect to slip and falls, the principal liability arises due to either adequate or inadequate maintenance. The um depending on what this particular lease arrangement um will say, often in a situation where we uh lease space, then we uh also uh attend to or ensure that the maintenance is up to the standards uh of the city. Otherwise, the city would uh be considered to have have failed in its responsibility to maintain to inadequate. It would be negligent and uh liability would result. The um I I believe part of the question is whether there is uh negligence in uh the the choice of a location or negligence in in inviting people to do something unsafe. That 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 is a um that is a different analysis. And although the the statement about the car wash and indicating that uh sometimes a um an attempt to deflect liability doesn't work, um there are still measures that we can take to ensure that it is you know, that our responsibilities are discharged. I'm I'm not sure if I've 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 answered uh the question. There are many, many sources of liability in uh in a negligence action where someone gets injured. The city is often involved um at the outset. There are often um we uh our insurance over the deductible attends to those matters where where we fall within the insurance terms. And um so it's it's very much a mixed bag.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, no, I I wasn't expecting a uh a clear and concise because I do know there's a lot of variables. I just wanted to highlight the fact that there's there's a certain amount of risk involved either way with the supposed uh making one option look that much better than than the other. Uh thank, thank you for your answer. Uh my next question would be for Deputy Mayor Ward. Uh obviously, this isn't a a new park. Uh we've got a small ball diamond there that I would imagine the young kids play at whether it's organized leagues with uh the Minor Baseball Association or not, I'm not sure. And there's also tennis courts. Now, as someone that plays baseball myself, um like Counselor Morales, I was a catcher. But also too, even the coaches, uh they're lugging big, heavy hockey bags full of baseball bats. And I would anticipate that they're parking across the road right now. So I'm just wondering why all of a sudden something changes now that we're putting or or looking at putting a community garden in this park? If these problems didn't already occur with a ball diamond and two tennis courts, why does, why does everything all of a sudden change when we're looking at putting a community garden in?
Uh thank you, Counselor Harvey. And uh, yeah, because there was a baseball diamond until maybe ten years ago. I'm not sure the exact date it was changed to. I think, I'm not sure why, but I will point out that a a parking lot in this park was included in the capital, in the capital budget until recently, then it got dropped. And I'm not sure why it was dropped. And this is an attempt to put it back in the capital budget because I think that we're adding more uses to it. Um and I think that there is a a more of a need to be, have a parking lot with the community garden. Uh maybe I'll just point out too, I want to clarify something that Counselor Morales, in case anybody's watching, the decision to move the community garden to this park from Sunnydale has not been made yet. It's a proposal. There's a community meeting about it this Thursday. So if anybody thinks the decision has been made, it hasn't been made. That's what the reason for this uh meeting Thursday is to hear what the neighbors have to say, residents have to say. And the most, the original motion is if the community garden moves to this location, then a parking lot would be built. So just to clarify that, I think there is a need for it. I get regular complaints from the people about, from the neighbors about all the traffic parking on the streets.
Sorry, Deputy Mayor Ward, I I do have to stop you. I I know there was a question, but you can only answer questions because you did have a chance to speak already. Sorry, Deputy Mayor Ward, but I gotta cut you off.
But that's, I already get complaints about the parking. So I think this is solving two problems. It's solving the part, part of the problem, parking for the tennis court and the soccer field, soccer pitch, but also the uh community garden part.
Counselor Harvey, you have the floor.
Great. Thank you, Your Worship. Yeah, I I knew he was uh starting to go on a little bit there, but uh I wanted to definitely give Deputy Mayor uh Ward his chance to be able to rebut what I was saying there. I I do appreciate, and I'll be quite honest, the last week I was in favor of uh of this parking lot, especially when we started talking about gravel opposed to asphalt. But then after receiving a call from Counselor McCann with the proposition from the Kozlov Center, I think it's a lot more fiscally responsible for us to at least look at this option for a one year period and then reassess this. If in fact, this so this location even gets selected, like we're spending a lot of time debating something that we don't even know that this is even a location because there's several other locations that already have these parking lots and resources available. So a- as a result, I will support this motion uh moving forward because I think this is the fiscal responsible way to go. And and maybe this isn't the most ideal location for a community garden.
Okay, uh I have Counselor Owen and uh but before I get there, Counselor McCann, did you have something on one of these uh questions? You did already speak to the motion.
Yeah, no, I respect your um your um your uh not speaking twice, but I do have some clarification I have. Do you want me to go before or after, Counselor Owen?
No, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. You know, I did ask about this, uh the uh the liability. Uh but maybe it's a question about accessibility that Deputy Mayor Ward had. You know, having a uh, I think we we mentioned, and maybe I should have put this in the motion, that if we did decide to have parking lots at Kozlov Mall, uh that we have some form of dirt road that uh pay community garden patrons be able to draw off and drop off their garden wares is number one. But number two is, I just need counsel to understand, this isn't about the community garden. If you read the actual staff report, if you don't mind, can I read it again, Mayor Lehman? This is that it, the staff in Parks and Forestry Branch meet with the owners of the Kozlov Center to discuss the allotment of parking spaces for patrons of the Riverwood Park. And like I, we're getting on only about the gardens. What the gardens don't work, I still want this to move forward because we still have patrons going for tennis. And I'm not sure with Deputy Mayor Ward, maybe Inger Pierce could maybe um answer this. You know, we just kind of publicly said that we kind of let people park over at the Kozlov Mall to go play tennis. Well, has we now, do we now uh assume that liability now? So just for clarity, this is about the park, not about the garden. And if the park doesn't move, I still think that the city of Barry should talk to the Kozlov Center because we're getting ten spots for a dollar for a year. I think that's a great partnership.
Okay, thanks, Counselor McCann. Okay, thanks councillor McCann, councillor Owen, and then anyone else?
No, there was a question there, Mayor Lehman, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Your question was to Ms Peters?
Uh, to deputy mayor Ward about the accessibility that if, if a garden was proposed and did actually get installed at Riverwood Park and we had a dirt road to the gardens, would that be sufficient enough for the accessibility, um, uh, gardeners? And then the second question was for Ms Peters is that, uh, since deputy mayor Ward has just publicly said that we kind of turn a blind eye to the people that are parking at Kozlov Mall that are using Riverwood Park, does that now put us in liability? Because we've done a publicly just said we're turning a blind eye.
Okay, before we answer Ms Peters, I'll go to staff on the cost and feasibility of the dirt road and then deputy mayor Ward can answer that question. Ms Peters, you can answer councillor McCann's question as well. Um, at this point in the discussion, anybody else who wishes to speak, please indicate because we need to bring this one to a vote so we can move on. So Ms Peters, councillor McCann's question, go ahead.
Jim, it's not about the costing, it's about the accessibility, sorry.
I understand that councillor McCann. Go ahead, Ms Peters.
It's through you, mayor, to councillor McCann. I, I, I think it would be a good idea to, to explore whether parking is going on and whether there's any, whether there's any merit in possibly just clarifying what is going on. And it's, it's, it's never the wrong thing to do to, to look at it, to see whether we should encourage it or discourage it.
Thank you, deputy mayor Ward. Did you want to answer councillor McCann's first question?
I'm, I'm not sure the difference between building a, a road in so people can drive into the garden and unload and building a parking lot. I mean, it kind of sounds the same to me if you, makes more sense to actually build a parking lot if we're going to build a road all the way back to the, uh, where the garden is. We're going to have some kind of accessible trail, that's true, but to actually have a road that comes in off Kozlov Street so people can go in and turn around. I mean, it makes more sense if you're going to do that to build, in my mind, to build a parking lot.
It's not really, that's not really the question I asked. It was more, is this that accessible? Would that actually make it accessible for the paid, the gardening patrons?
A, a road or a parking lot would both be accept, make it accessible, correct?
Okay, thank you both. On that issue to staff, if Mr Friary's on the call. The parking lot, I believe, is close to the road, a road into the community garden location. Could you give us a quick sense of what that might cost?
Your worship and members of council, um, we figured roughly about $40,000 to complete a, a parking lot that would hold 10 to 12 cars. Now, um, there is opportunities to reduce the costs if we weren't going to go asphalt, but they were preliminary costs and that would be in the area sort of just in front of the tennis courts is the conceptual drawing that I have seen.
Sorry, the question was if you were to build a road into the proposed community garden location, what would the cost of that road be?
Your worship and members of council, uh, we would have to come up with a cost for that. It would be significantly less than, than that cost, but, um, you know, it, it could just be a matter of putting in a curb cut and some reclaimed asphalt. Uh, you know, we may even be able to do that in-house.
Okay, councillor McCann, one more question, then I'll let the remaining councillors speak and we can move on past the parking lot. Go ahead.
Uh, Mayor Lehman, appreciate your leniency and your patience with me, but maybe this question goes to Dave Friary through you. Uh, would we not have to build that accessibility path anyways? Uh, to get to the gardens? So it wouldn't be an extra added cost. It would be the same cost, correct?
Your worship and members of council, uh, it could be depending on the width of the, of the path. So, you know, the path may be the size of a roadway to allow city trucks to drive into the back there as well. So it, it would be similar cost, yes.
So just so we're clear here, it would be no extra cost?
To build that? Uh, no, it should not.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Owen.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. Uh, just quickly, I won't be supporting this, same reason as last week. Um, I think the barrier-free spot at the Coulter Street Garden is really important and I think a barrier-free spot in this location as well would be really important. Uh, so I think a parking lot is a good idea. Uh, all of our public spaces should be accessible to everyone. Uh, that's a larger conversation. Maybe we need to, to have it.
Thanks councillor Owen. Anyone else wish to comment on the amendment? Okay, just a few comments. I won't be supporting this. It's a really practical reason. If anybody's seen people using community gardens, lugging 50-pound bags of soil and fertilizer and seed and loads of, hopefully the produce that they've been able to produce. Uh, I've watched at my local community garden, people pull up with their pickup truck, they drop the tailgate uh, and they drag stuff over to the garden. And I'm just trying to imagine somebody dragging something across Kozlov Street in the middle of traffic. Um, I guess the other comment I would make is, I, I do think it, it's as simple as providing the same service to our residents uh, in Ward Four as we've provided at other community gardens. Um, I do see a bit of a safety issue there, but mostly it's supporting our residents in the, the use of the park. Deputy Mayor Ward's represented this area for 18 years. He knows the park extremely well and I'm going to support the word councillors' views on this. So with that, I'll call the question on the amendment. It's on the floor. Are those in favor of the amendment? Please indicate. Those opposed? I am as well. The amendment fails. Okay, amendment number five is with regards to the Vespa build. Uh, this is moved by councillor Owen and seconded by councillor Rob Thompson. Councillor Owen, go ahead. Sorry, madam clerk.
Um, Mayor Lehman, that would be the, the remaining amendments for section B?
Yes, that's on section C. You're right. I need to call the question on B as amended, don't I? Uh, okay, folks, any other amendments to section B of the business plan and budget? Nope. Okay, I'll make a few comments when we're complete on what is included in this year's budget. It's been summarized by staff, but let's move through the remaining amendments first. So on section B as amended several times, I'll call the question. Those in favor, please indicate. Or any opposed? I'm in favor as well. That carries unanimously. Thank you, members of council. Okay, sorry, I'll need deputy mayor Ward to introduce section C before we go about amending it. Go ahead, deputy mayor Ward.
By myself, seconded by councillor Thompson, that section C of the general committee report dated January 18, 2021 is circulated to be adopted.
Thank you. It's moved by deputy mayor Ward, seconded by councillor Thompson, that uh, section C of the general committee report dated January 18th concerning the 2021 business plan be approved. Yeah. Comments, questions and amendments. The first one we have is councillor Owen, seconded by councillor Thompson. Go ahead councillor Owen.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Lehman. Uh, and there is a second one I have after, uh, that I don't think is in the document. Just wanted to note that, but, uh, we'll start with this one. So that motion 21-G dash zero zero seven of section C of the general committee report dated January 18, 2021 concerning the Vespa Street project be amended as follows. By deleting paragraph one and replacing it with the following, that a capital project be added to the 2021 capital plan entitled Modular Supportive Housing Project Vespa Street with funding of approximately $3 million, inclusive of the $500,000 estimated to be required for soil remediation to be funded from debt with final amounts to be determined through request for proposal planning and approval of a proposal with the annual debt servicing costs to be paid from the reinvestment reserve and that funding be leveraged to access other funding opportunities. And B, by adding the following as paragraph two and renumbering paragraph two to paragraph three, uh, that after consultation with the, uh, the county of Simcoe and social agencies dealing with homelessness and before the issuance of the request for proposal, the general manager of community and corporate services report back to general committee on the target residence for the Vespa Street build, sources of subsidies, key project parameters and how the city's funding can be leveraged to access other funding opportunities. And then C, by deleting paragraph three and replacing it with the following, that following a report, uh, back to general committee, staff in the corporate facilities, development services and legal services department in consultation with the county of Simcoe issue a call for proposals for a service provider to construct and manage the builds and operate the housing units. And I can speak to it.
That spacebar just does not want to work. Okay, it is moved by councillor Owen, seconded by councillor Thompson. Uh, that motion 21G seven is section C of the general committee report concerning the Vespa Street project be amended as follows by deleting paragraph one uh, and replacing it with the following, that a capital project be added to the 2021 capital plan entitled Modular Supportive Housing Project Vespa Street with, with funding of approximately $3 million, inclusive of the $500,000 estimated to be required for soil remediation to be funded from debt with final amounts to be determined through request for proposal planning and approval of a proposal with the annual debt servicing costs to be paid from the reinvestment reserve and that funding be leveraged to access other funding opportunities. B, that funding for the remediation be capped at $750,000. Sorry, that was introduced councillor Owen. Sorry, no, that's a typo here. That may be a separate amendment. Okay. Secondly, by adding the following is paragraph two and renumbering paragraph two to paragraph three, that after consultation with the county of Simcoe and social agencies dealing with homelessness and before the issuance of the request for proposal, the general manager of community and corporate services report back to general committee on the target residence for the Vespa Street build, source of subsidies, key project parameters and how the city's funding can be leveraged to access other funding opportunities. Uh, and, uh, D, by deleting paragraph three and replacing it with the following, that following a report back to general committee, staff in the corporate facilities, development services and legal services department in consultation with the county of Simcoe issue a call for proposals for service provider to construct and manage the build and operate the housing units. Think I got that right. Councillor Owen, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. Sounds right to me. Uh, so we had a great discussion about this, uh, at general committee last week. Uh, and we've been talking sort of behind the scenes over the course of the week about how we make, uh, this the best project possible. Um, and how we engage the community as well in the process and councillor Natalie Harris and I have another amendment coming forward on that. But what I think is important here with this amendment is that we are adding language so that we can get the information that we need to make the best decision possible and to have the best project possible. Um, I heard council loud and clear last week that there was a desire for more information, uh, and I think this achieves that. Um, the reality is, is that there are people living out on the streets in our community. Uh, and on top of that, we are facing a housing crisis, uh, rental rates are the fifth highest in the country. Uh, and we need to act as quickly as we can on that. So this is, uh, one step in the right direction. Um, and I hope we can get, uh, council support on it. And I'm happy to answer any questions as well. And thank you as well to all the councillors who worked throughout the week, uh, to adjust the wording and make sure we included everything we need. Uh, in particular, thank you to councillor Thompson, deputy mayor Ward, councillor Natalie Harris and Mayor Lehman. Thanks.
Thanks councillor Owen. Uh, anybody wish to speak to this? Councillor Hungle and councillor Morales.
Thank you, your worship. Um, through you to councillor Owen or any member that feels, uh, involved in the motion and great to, great to see this come forward. I'm quite excited about it. I'm happy to see, um, the adjustments to expand this, to support some of the process pieces and, and to, you know, to give merit to some questions that were raised about um, timing and timeline and how does it come back and, um, some of the pieces that I think will come through that, uh, request for proposal. So, uh, with this, I guess I'll, I'll state kind of my hope around where this goes and I, I'm, I'm hoping, um, that this is kind of within the weeds of the process. And that as we talk a bit about the, kind of, I think of it as excellence by design, right? So that proposal that's going to go out and really try and, uh, target individuals that can really, uh, look at dignified housing in this type of, uh, approach that we talked about. Um, but how do we also, if possible, through this process, look at this as being an asset that over time, uh, can acknowledge that if we see the rapid housing initiatives come through as we're expecting um, and we see our stock change on types of housing that, you know, we see in Barry that meets different needs, we may hypothetically see that, um, individuals and, and different, um, needs, um, become different, the new gaps along that continuum of housing. So, you know, sitting on the seniors advisory council, you know, I, I do need to express housing is an incredible and the key topic of conversation. And I am aware of residents in my ward that are being identified as being low-income seniors that are renting, that don't have an asset to leverage and are, are actually not able to afford a rental property. So, um, basically as we talk and some of the language, um, identifies certain social service agencies, the county of Simcoe, um, but I'm hoping it's broad to also say, what are the controls for us to be able to look at dignified housing that might be mixed use in the future to meet an immediate need, but as our needs shift, um, how do we make sure that we're not creating access for some, but really not looking at an appreciation of, of a continuum of individuals that might be on fixed income, low income? Um, and, uh, might be a different transition point. So I'm hoping, uh, we're not really targeting just one population or one, one type of need or income level.
Thanks councillor Hungle. Uh, councillor Morales.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Lehman. Uh, there was just a small technicality on the motion. I checked with one of our senior staff and there's no need to do a friendly amendment. Um, so I guess I'll just use my time to just make some quick comments. Awesome. I support this. Um, and I'm going to stay on the positive note. So looking forward to see what results this yields. I also, I'm going to personally use this as a learning experience and I hope other members of council do too. This is what it should have been last week. No 11th hour thing, no emotional arguments, no, if you don't support this, you hate people, you, you know, the children will, you know. And this is relevant to the motion because, look, you know, I'm, 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 I echo councillor Owen's comments. It's great to see councillors working together throughout the week, arriving at something that we all more or less wanted last week. I think with the exceptions of my comments about the location, but that's just, that's just on me, not on council. Um, this is what we wanted. And I hope we use this as a learning experience for future decisions that come forward. Um, for, both for unity as a council, uh, but for effectiveness, right? If we can do this, not the, you know, in future projects, short of there being short-term or, or, or very time-sensitive timelines for funding, um, we can get a lot more done. So I think, again, uh, the, the positive spin on this is if we could do this kind of in the 11th hour, do the proper homework, imagine what we can do on a plethora of projects when we do the proper due diligence and we don't necessarily frame it in a, you either support this or you blank, blank, blank. Um, so I'll be happy to support this. Um, and hopefully, yeah, moving forward. Um, you know, this approach can be more the standard, um, instead of the, in, instead of the, uh, instead of the backup.
Thanks councillor Morales. Councillor Natalie Harris.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. Um, yeah, I just wanted, obviously I support this and I'm, I'm so grateful to councillor Thompson for working with councillor Owen, um, to bring this forward. And, um, I just think it's important to state that I, I think highlighting the 11th hour on such an important issue, it's not the 11th hour. I get it. We have, this proposal is new, but we were discussing the budget last week and we had one week to finalize it this week. And sometimes, um, ideas that come forward, um, with councillor, um, Ailwyn and Mayor Lehman and I, it just, it just seemed to really make sense. It wasn't that we were putting something forward to make it complicated, to make it difficult, and we absolutely were very open to, um, obviously, uh, expanding the wording and making it so that it's, uh, it suits everybody's needs. But councillor Morales, we, there was never any intention to bring something that was kind of, um, you know, holding somebody's, um, beliefs to the fire or whatever, or scolding anyone that wouldn't approve this in the, in a, in a, in a pretty quick manner. But with that being said, I do appreciate that you, um, you know, have seen that this amendment is, is positive and that means a lot. And at the end of the day, what really matters is that we move forward and, and make this, um, a really great success. And, um, I commend everybody that, again, behind the scenes has worked really hard. So it was, it kind of, it came forward, obviously, to, as a surprise to some people, but, um, we can do anything if we all work together and, and come to, um, uh, agreements. And then again, I really appreciate what councillor Hungle said as well because there's so many other usage, uses for this. so many other usage, uses for this project in the future as well. And, and it's just the beginning. We have lots of things to still figure out. We still have lots of, the proposals aren't even in yet. So, the discussion will be ongoing, it'll be exciting, it'll be wonderful, and I really appreciate your support with that, Counselor Morales. And with that, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Harris. Counselor Jim Harris.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. I too will be supporting this, and I also appreciate the work that's been done in the last week to kind of flesh out some details and give some more process to this. I've had one question, and it was born from the comments from Counselor Hungle, and she mentioned about seniors. And I, I know there's some opportunities that are being presented and hopefully will come to bear with relation to housing and supportive housing. So, I was wondering if there is any appetite or room in this motion? Maybe it's in the new paragraph two to include seniors somewhere, or is that too much too soon? Maybe that's, I don't know if I can, I don't know, Counselor Hungle, you had, you'd mentioned that, that was a really great point, and is that a question I can, maybe I'll ask the mover. Thank you, Counselor Aylwyn, I saw you put your hand up, made through Mayor Lehman to you. This, is there, can that be in there, is that a little bit of too much too soon? So, thank you for the, for the opportunity to ask the question.
Counselor Owen.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. No, great, great question. Thank you for raising it, and thank you, Counselor Hungle as well. Definitely the intention here is to be as flexible as possible, and I'm open to that, although I do see it says, you know, that we're going to get a report back on the target residence, and I kind of like the idea of leaving it wide open to see where the needs are. So, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that, but that's kind of where I'm at now. Like, if you think the motions two, you know, doesn't provide enough flexibility to potentially address some of those particular housing needs down the road, then I'd be open to an amendment. But the way it's written right now, I feel very confident that our staff will come back with, you know, a flexible plan, and we'll see where the needs are immediately and address that in the report. I don't know if that helps answer your question, sorry.
No, it does. Thank you, Counselor Owen. And maybe, maybe where I noticed, if it could be, it's in the consultation, if we're consulting council, after consultation with council, the council of Simcoe, I'm sorry, I'm reading what's said here in front of me, County of Simcoe, right? My report says council of Simcoe.
Yeah, it's a typo.
Agency dealing with homelessness, maybe that could be, if we also consult with seniors associated groups as opposed to just those dealing with homelessness, would that be fair? So, their voices heard in that consultation as we get to what population, is that, would that be a friendly? We said with homeless and seniors groups or groups representing seniors, is that fair? Maybe that's true, through, through you, Mayor Lehman, to Counselor Aylwyn as a friendly? That's in chap, that's in paragraph two, which I'm having a hard time reading because of the wording, so I apologize.
Mayor Lehman, good to speak. Yeah, I, do you know what, I like that. I think, might have to look to the clerk, because I don't, we're at council, so I'm not sure if we need a written amendment to do something like that.
You do, yeah.
Okay. That complicates things, so.
If I can suggest, Counselor Harris, if, if your goal here is that agencies who represent seniors who are at housing risk or themselves are homeless, I think staff could interpret, especially given council's interest, social agencies to include those organizations. I mean, I'm aware, for example, that the Salvation Army and the Busby Center and indeed the Gilbert Center all deal with a population from teenagers through to, you know, there's somebody in the Out of the Coal Program last year was in his 80s and still living rough, and that is the spectrum. But I think specifically to the issue of seniors housing, there are some other agencies that are a little closer to that issue, and they could be consulted as well if you're willing to, to have that confidence in the interpretation of social agencies. If you want to move a written amendment, we could do it that way, too.
Okay. I think I have more confidence in staff's ability to follow through with this discussion than my ability to write the amendment, so I'm a fly here and get it through you. So, thank you for that intervention, and with that said, I thank you for entertaining that, just that, be mindful of, of engaging our, our groups who are advocating on behalf, we're going to have a senior, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Harris. Further comments on this amendment? Anyone else wish to speak? Counselor Thompson and Counselor, sorry, Counselor McCann, I saw you first, and then Counselor Thompson.
Thanks, Mayor.
As a matter of fact, go ahead, Counselor Tom.
Through you to Ms. McAlpine, I have a question just on the address. In an email you sent to council, it referred to 65 Vespa. Do we own, is there multiple addresses? Now, it's hard, I tried to Google it, I was, I was actually on the phone with Counselor Reitman, and I was standing there, and we were trying to figure, figure it out on Google Maps, and I went up to Victoria Street, I know there's a whole parcel. Is there multiple addresses or 65 cover the whole from Sanford, Vespa, Victoria?
Ms. McAlpine.
Mayor Lehman, through you to Counselor Thompson, the city owns three parcels, 65 Vespa, as well as parcels along Victoria Street, but it does not own the entire block. And the reference, there was a question posed by email from a member of council that referenced 65 Vespa, and that was what I responded back with. The, the motion identifies the Vespa site, it doesn't specify which particular legal description or street address is in it. I was merely reporting back on or responding using the language in the question.
Perfect, yeah, that's, I was looking for the clarification. Now, with the contamination, is it based just solely on 65 or with investigating it's the entire property?
Mayor Lehman, through you to Counselor Thompson, I would ask Andrew Mills to respond on the investigation, but I believe it's included 65 Vespa, maybe where the concentration is, so.
Through you, Mayor Lehman, to Counselor Thompson, the majority of the contamination is within the area of the former fire station sites, so 65 Vespa Street.
Perfect, thank you. Just a comment. I have seconded this motion or amendment, but there was a lot of work and the conversations with Counselor Jim Harris, Deputy Mayor Ward, Mayor Lehman, you know, Counselor McCann. We actually all spoke, and I think it shows great things, what we're able to do. And, you know, Deputy Mayor Ward last week raised some concerns, and somebody who's been around the table an awful long time, but totally led the way and helped me with wording, and then it kind of morphed into Counselor Aylwyn. Just think that when we do work together as a collective group, we can move mountains. So, I think going forward, this is something I'd like to see a little more of, to be a better collective group for our city from top to bottom. So, I'll leave it there, thank you.
Couldn't agree more, Counselor Thompson, thanks for that. Counselor McCann.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman, and thank you, Counselor Thompson, for including me in the discussions, you know, and in hindsight, as always, it is 2020, I should have spoken before you, because your comments were a compliment of mine, and I hope mine don't, don't muddy the waters. But I found this process extremely frustrating, and I am talking to Counselor Aylwyn, you directly. You moved the motion last week, I think that I was, never been clearer on my opinions of not getting information moving forward and, you know, voting on a project of $3 million with zero information. And it wasn't till today, I never had any discussions with you or the mayor or anybody actually but Counselor Harvey and Counselor Thompson. And I do find that frustrating, because I had an amendment myself moving forward that was, you know, pretty similar to what, to what you put forth with one little amendment. And my first thoughts were, are social media and the news headlines really running this council? And that has really kind of made me sick to my stomach. Then Counselor Thompson really kind of walked me off the ledge, because that's what I thought was going on here. So, I do need to ask a couple of questions just so I get clarification, because I want to move mountains with this council, and I do want this council to be, to be strong. We had a, a, an in-camera session to build the bond of this council, which I haven't seen any evidence that it's actually worked. I am definitely a member that wants to see it work. So, maybe I can ask you, you know, what is the difference between last week's amendments that Counselor Thompson put up, I believe Deputy Mayor Ward, or maybe it was just by himself, and your amendment tonight? And you were so inflexible last week, and with six days, you've done a 180 almost, and maybe you could just maybe tell the public, you know, and tell me, you know, what's changed in six days?
Counselor Owen.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. Thanks for the question, Counselor McCann. So, like, like we discussed on our phone call on Thursday evening at length, this is a really important project for our city, and we do need to get it right. And I really wanted to make sure we could address your questions and concerns with the project, because that's absolutely valid. We should have all the information that we need before we support something this large, absolutely. And I think we've achieved that with this motion, there's been added language that explicitly asks staff for additional information in advance of issuing the RFP. So, that's the major difference here, is that we want to get that information before the RFP is actually issued, so that we have a say in what that process can look like. And there's going to be a fulsome report back in advance of that. So, that's, that's the main change with the motion. And again, I would appreciate, I really appreciate all of council's cooperation on that. Thanks.
Well, thank you for that answer. I'm not exactly sure if my question got answered, but I'll leave it be and just hope for the best here, that the intentions were, were pure. I guess I have a comment on the, on the amendment, and so I just want to make it crystal clear here, we are not approving anything tonight but more information. Is that correct, the move of the motion, please? The motion, moving the motions?
Counselor Owen.
Or Counselor Thompson could be fine.
Yeah, thanks for the question, Counselor McCann. And I guess I would just stress to the importance of keeping the conversation really focused on the issue at hand, too. I feel like we might be straying from that a little bit. So, yes, we are looking for more information, but to me and the intention here is that we are making a solid commitment to making the best project that's possible on this site. We know there's a need. This is a property that the city owns and has been sitting vacant for quite a while, and I think we need to seize the opportunity and really look at what's out there in terms of the possibilities and get the proper information before we make that final decision and also engage the community in the process. And I'll speak to that further with the amendment that I mentioned earlier from Counselor Natalie Harris and I. So, that's the intention here, we are committed to this project, making it work, but recognizing that we do still need more information in order to make the best project possible.
Yeah, I'm going to actually need Counselor Thompson to weigh in that, that answer again, please. Are we approving anything tonight but more information? Counselor Thompson, please.
Counselor Thompson.
I would say, just by the motion, if you read it, it's that we're concrete on doing something on this site, but what that looks like will all be based on consultation with all the providers. But actually, nothing is being approved other than the remediation of the land tonight with a consultation from our housing providers and with staff. That's how I interpret this, and I think we're getting a little bit off of it, to be honest. To, to say nothing is going to happen here, I think, isn't fair to anybody watching. I think this motion actually says something will happen. Now, what that looks like is while the other information is needed. So, I really can't add anything.
Well, thank you, Counselor Thompson, appreciate that, through you, Mayor Lehman. Maybe, maybe it's semantics, and maybe I, I'm just wanting a lot more detail here, and the two movers not giving a really direct answer in 10 seconds does give me some concern, because I would like, I would hope to think that if the information that we receive comes back, that this project is grossly over $3 million, it's going to be around $10 million, is there an opportunity to still say no? And I believe that the answer is going to be yes to that, clearly. I, am I wrong in thinking that?
Through you, Mayor Lehman. Just a quick answer would be 100%. If it goes over the allotted amount, we'd have to come back to council. That's, look, in my opinion, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that's the way this works. You know, if there's a, we're going to discuss, yeah, that's, Counselor McCann, we discussed a $30,000 parking lot for 40 minutes. We're going to discuss any kind of amount that's over the written motion. So, that's, that's the best I can tell you. But yeah, it's, there's not a, an unlimited ceiling on a motion that says approximately 3 million.
I guess I am just, I am, I'm cautiously optimistic that if this comes back to us, that we've got the ability to say no. And talking to Counselor Aylwyn, to me, he's clearly saying, no, we are moving forward. And so, I don't want to, I want to say yes to this tonight, and I'm pretty sure that I would lose tonight if I said no, because I think that the appetite for this council is yes. But I need to know concrete that if the information that we get back coming from Simcoe County, coming back from general, from staff, from the Department of Consultation of the County of Simcoe County, with our city experts, that we have a decision to say, you know what, this project is out of our scope. Or with the $30 million coming in from the federal government, that there may be other projects that we can do, that we're not pigeonholed and handcuffed to this one project. If the answer to that question is, no, Mike, we're moving forward, then I absolutely will not be supporting this. So, I, I, I appreciate, or maybe I don't appreciate the comment about the 30 minutes on the Riverwood parking lot. This is taxpayers' money, and I've got a passion, I've got a vision for my city, and I want to do what's best for the city, not what's best for us. So, I asked the question again, do we have the ability, maybe I'll ask Mayor Lehman, do we have the ability to say no to this project before we spend any other money than the $500,000 that's allocated for the soil remediation?
Yes.
Thank you very much. That is the answer I was looking for. So, I do have an amendment that maybe Wendy Cook could let me know, should I introduce this now, or should I introduce this after this is passed? Wendy? Ms. Cook, sorry.
You're on mute, Madam Clerk.
Creature of habit there. Thank you, Mayor Lehman, through you to Counselor McCann. I, you could put it as an amendment to the amendment right now, if you'd like, or you could let this one, the vote on this one happen, and then introduce your amendment after. It's totally up to yourself.
I think it'd be fitting that I bring it, I bring it up now, Mayor Lehman, I think you have that in front of you.
Is this with regards to capping the remediation costs?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor.
Sorry, just got to find it now. Okay, so, it's moved by myself, and Counselor Harvey, you still with me? You still seconding this?
I think Counselor.
Moved by myself and Counselor Harvey.
Very idea.
That motion 21-G007 of Section C of the General Committee Report dated January 18th, 2021, concerning the Vesper Street project be amended as follows by, by numeration paragraph one as 1A and add in the. By, uh, by numeration paragraph one as 1A and add in the following as paragraph 1B. That funding for the soil remediation be capped at $750,000 and staff and legal service department report on any overages to this amount to General Committee.
Madam Clerk.
Um, through you, Mayor Lehman, to Counselor McCann, I would prefer, uh, that Counselor Harvey, uh, confirm verbally because he's never confirmed that he would second the motion. Um, or have another member second it just because I don't want to put him in that position.
Okay, Counselor Morales, I think is seconding it to get it on the floor. Yes, Counselor Morales? Okay, it's seconded by Counselor Morales. The amendment to the amendment is on the floor. Go ahead, Counselor McCann.
I think I, it's pretty self-explanatory. I mean, I did some, uh, some research, uh, about, uh, you know, cleaning up soil and the cost, you know, could be as much as $3 million. And, uh, I think I was talking to Counselor Harvey today about him being my seconder. And I asked him, you know, quite frankly, you know, uh, if it was $5 million, would he accept yes or no? And I went down and I don't know if this council has an appetite to spend more than $500,000. I thought I would, uh, save time and, uh, and trust our staff that, uh, they would, uh, try to keep it at 500. But if it gets past a quarter million dollars, which would be 50% more than what we're, uh, than what we're actually approving, then it comes back to General Committee, everything stops and we make a quick decision if we want to move forward. And hopefully at that time, we'll have a better understanding if this is going to be a million dollar project or this is going to be a $2 million project. Because the experts I've consulted said that you don't really know until you know, until you start digging.
Okay, uh, on the amendment to the amendment, anybody wish to speak to this? Counselor Aylwin and then Counselor Natalie Harris.
Thank you, Mary Lehman, uh, and thank you, Counselor McCann for bringing that forward. I will not be supporting, uh, and for the simple fact that we were told last week by, uh, our legal department that they're very confident, uh, in the number that they provided to us. Uh, and that it's, uh, a very accurate number, um, with the work they've done. Uh, and I've also checked in with them and they've, uh, they do have contingencies, uh, built in to that $500,000 number as well. Um, they've built in a 10% contingency. So I think that more than covers, uh, you know, the risk of, of potential over, overages. Uh, and I have full confidence in our staff, uh, that they can make this work. And, uh, if not, they can come back to council, um, with, uh, with the request for additional funding. Thanks.
Okay, uh, Counselor Natalie Harris.
Um, no, I, I'm good actually with, after what Counselor Aylwin said. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Morales.
Uh, thank you, Mary Lehman. There's zero risk to, um, voting in favor of this. If everything Counselor Aylwin is accurate, and I trust our staff also, that this will never, ever be an issue. This is like an insurance to the insurance. Um, so if we don't believe that, that the numbers are accurate or we have concerns about them going over, over, overages, then we actually would want this because this is that second hold. So this is essentially accountability on, 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 on our, on our staff's best information, which, um, is not an insult to staff, but I think considering the concerns of the project is just proper due diligence. And it's not undermining or delaying the project. If it comes in under that $500,000 for anybody who has concerns, um, at or under, then this will not delay it at all. So I, the couple of minutes we talk about it, I'm more than supportive of it.
Thank you, Counselor Morales. Counselor Gary Harvey.
Thank your worship. Uh, first, I just wanted to apologize for disappearing for a minute. Uh, I had to change to a secondary internet source. I guess there's too many gamers in my neighborhood again, uh, this evening. Um, I, I just, because I didn't hear the, uh, the motion, I, uh, was this the $750,000 remediation cap?
Yes, and Counselor Morales moved it, uh, to get it on the floor.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Um, I, I, I am supportive of this and, uh, and the reason for that is actually Counselor Morales just highlighted it very well. It's, it's an insurance policy to ensure that we don't end up going extremely over when it comes to remediation. And the example that I gave to Counselor McCann earlier this afternoon when we were speaking was in one of my former workplaces in Brampton, which was a huge parcel of land. And when they were selling the factory, uh, the intent originally was to sell it to a developer for residential uses. Then when they got into exploring the remediation, because a factory had been on this parcel of land for so many decades, it turned out the remediation was going to cost $14 million, which was exactly what the property was valued at that, at the time. So obviously it wouldn't make sense to spend that same amount of money to be able to remediate, uh, that parcel of land because it would literally double the value of it. However, you'd never be able to recoup your, uh, your losses. Um, so as a result, that land then got changed to commercial uses because you didn't have the same remediation, uh, issues. Um, so that's why I'm very supportive of this. This is like Counselor Morales said, it's an extra insurance policy to make sure that we don't end up in that type of a situation. And again, if, if the numbers are accurate that we're being told, then, uh, there, the, this should pass without any issues because if a 10% contingency on 500,000 is far less than the 750,000 that we're talking about here. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Harvey. Sorry, can't get off mute again. Uh, anyone else wish to speak to the amendment to the amendment? Uh, so I'm going to support this. Sorry, is there, did I see somebody else wish to speak to this or we? Oh, okay, Counselor.
Thank you, worship. I, it might not be necessary, but I thought I would just, um, identify. Uh, I appreciated the dialogue that, um, came about with respects to the, the motion, the amendment to the amendment. I will support it because it's on the floor and it does provide a nice kind of safety net around, um, not having to trigger us back and allow staff to continue in that area. But did really, um, appreciate the due diligence done by, um, Counselor Aylwin and others with staff. So it's great to see the confidence and hear about the controls in place. Uh, I'm not expecting we'll need the 750,000, but, um, do appreciate that we've created maybe a process to streamline any back and forth with council and to, uh, allow the, the corrective action to be taken.
Thanks, Counselor Kangal. Um, Counselor Natalie Harris, did you have a question? Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mary Lehman. I guess, uh, maybe I'm confused. Is, uh, is this a redundant motion? If, if it, if it goes over $500,000 because estimated, wouldn't staff be sharing that with the rest of the information that's coming back to us? I.
Uh, yeah, actually I was going to make the point that our capital projects policy, any project that goes more than 10% over budget is already being reported to council. So that would be a $550,000 number. Now, to be fair to the mover of the amendment, um, I, you know, I'm not sure he was intending to increase that limit, uh, but rather limit the overall cost of the remediation. Uh, if it, uh, if it was to rise, it would already come back to us. But the other issue here is, um, uh, because the full project cost won't be known until the report back to General Committee, but we are directing the, the remediation. Uh, I think it's, I mean, in my opinion, it's in order and, and probably appropriate to do something like this.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying.
Thanks, uh, Counselor Natalie Harris. Excuse me. Uh, any of one else wish to speak to the amendment to the amendment? No? Okay, I, I think, um, there's actually a lower cap already in our capital budget policy. Uh, but lest there be any confusion because this is part of a larger project, which will no doubt have a cost well more than the, the, um, half million. Uh, and, uh, if we leverage funding, we'll be well more than 3 million. Uh, I, I would agree with the comments, uh, earlier that, uh, if we're confident about the amount, then, uh, there should be no concern about a cap that's 50% higher when our, our capital policy would be 10% higher to report back to council anyway. So I'll call the question on the amendment to the amendment, uh, which I will support. Those in favor of the amendments? I am as well opposed. Okay, that does carry. Uh, we're back on the original amendment now as amended. Um, I believe most members of council had a chance to speak to it. Are there, uh, any who did not speak to it that wish to? Okay, before I call the question, just a couple of things I wanted to say. Um, first of all, I really want to thank, uh, the vast majority of members of council. Uh, because, um, you know, you took the approach to this that you wanted to make it work, even if you had concerns with the project. Most of you, um, were part of a solution or conveyed your concerns. Uh, several of you worked actively on an amendment. Uh, that is exactly the way council should tackle something that i- they want to get done but aren't comfortable with yet. And that's where we were on Tuesday night. We had several members who wanted this project to happen but weren't comfortable with either lack of detail or some element to the process. And, uh, and I really appreciate, um, the efforts that you made. Uh, Counselor Thompson, Deputy Mayor Ward, um, uh, and others to contribute to a workable amendment here to, um, respond to those issues. And Counselor Aylwin for, um, um, moving it and, and working with, uh, Counselor Thompson. Um, I, I think as well, this is, um, uh, a really important project and very innovative for several reasons. Um, my office and I have to shout out to my staff who had been collecting information on the modular opportunity in Toronto for some time, uh, in the hopes that something like this might become possible. The county looked at it. Uh, it was not eligible for RHI because of the nature of the project itself. So I really appreciate that we, uh, you know, modular housing was first identified in the Affordable Housing Strategy in 2014. Uh, and it was brought forward to the council, uh, of the day. Um, Counselor Morales and, uh, Deputy Mayor Ward and Counselor McCann were part of, uh, that, the beginning of this strategy and it included a number of innovative housing forums. And this is one that we've never been able to proceed with in Barry. And now with the manufactured solution in Ontario, it becomes a very cost-effective, innovative and quick way to deliver low-cost, uh, public housing. Of course, the supportive housing piece, we've all made the case. I think we all understand the case for and the importance of that. Uh, and I would note that, uh, this site was first identified by Barry, Barry City Council a year and a half ago as a potential site for affordable housing in a public staff report. And that direction was reinforced by two more votes of council since then. Uh, so, uh, while the, the initial amendment was decidedly, uh, put together, um, you know, uh, on the night of the budget meeting, uh, what's happened since then has been excellent contributions from a number of members of council, uh, to get this to the amendment that is in front of you at the moment. Uh, so I will certainly be supporting it and I want to thank you for your work. And with that, I'll call the question. Uh, those in favor of the amendment on the floor, please indicate. Opposed? None are opposed. I'm in favor as well. That carries unanimously. Okay, uh, on Section C, um, further amendments, uh, Counselor Aylwin, you had another one. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mary Lehman. Uh, so just quickly, this amendment is on public engagement around this project. So it's moved by myself and Counselor Natalie Harris. That motion 21-G-007 of Section C of the General Committee Report dated January 18th, 2020, uh, 2021, uh, concerning the modular supportive housing project Vesper Street be amended by adding the following as paragraph four. That staff in the Development Services Department conduct a neighborhood meeting with the successful proponent and area residents to engage the public in the process and solicit feedback to improve the overall implementation of the project.
Thank you. It is moved by Counselor Aylwin and seconded by Counselor Natalie Harris. That motion 21G7 of Section C of the General Committee Report dated January 18th, concerning the modular supportive housing project Vesper Street, be amended by adding the following as paragraph four. That staff in the Development Services Department conduct a neighborhood meeting with the successful proponent and area residents to engage and area residents to engage the public in the process and solicit feedback to improve the overall implementation of the project. Counselor Aylwin, go ahead.
Thank you, Mary Lehman. Uh, so with any project, I think it's critical that we engage, uh, the surrounding neighborhood uh, and the public. And, uh, I really think that people in the area will be excited about this project when they understand the potential and, uh, and work on, uh, creating the vision for the, for the site. Uh, so just doing our due diligence here to make sure everyone's on board and engaged uh, and can understand exactly what's happening here.
Thank you very much. Uh, Counselor Thompson on the amendment.
Thanks, Mary Lehman. I will definitely be in support of this and, uh, people at home playing the home game. Um, I think it's great that Counselor Aylwin's moving this because actually neighborhood engagement wasn't necessary for this because of the zoning of the property. So to put that in, um, I think shows that process and due diligence will be done. So I will be in full support and I think it's great.
Thanks, Counselor Thompson. Counselor McCann.
Uh, thank you, Mary Lehman, and, uh, I'm, you know what, just going to echo Counselor Thompson's, uh, comments. Uh, just in the short six days, I've had, I think, close to 22 people, uh, reach out, um, in, uh, in a negative context. So it would be great to get more information so they can be, uh, further educated and, uh, hopefully we can't, uh, turn, uh, the community around, at least hear them because that is, uh, that is super important. So, um, I am supportive. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor McCann. Uh, others wish to comment on the amendment? Uh, okay, uh, I will call the question on the amendment. Those in favor, please indicate. Any opposed? None? That carries unanimously. Uh, and very good idea, Counselor Aylwin, and thank you for going above and beyond to consult with residents. And Counselor Natalie Harris, thank you again, uh, for working, Counselor Aylwin, on this. Uh, are there any further amendments to Section C of the Budget and Business Plan? Okay, seeing none, I will call the question on Section C of the General Committee Report as amended. All those in favor of Section C, please indicate. None opposed? That is unanimous and I thank you for that, members of council. Okay, uh, Section D, Deputy Mayor Ward.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Thompson. That sec- that motion 21G-008 of Section D of the General Committee Report dated January 18th, 2021, concerning the funding for a school crossing guard program be adopted.
Okay, it's moved by Deputy Mayor Ward, seconded by Counselor Thompson. That motion 21GH of Section D of the General Committee Report dated January 18th, 2021, concerning the funding for the school guard cross, a school crossing guard program be adopted. Counselor Gary Harvey, go ahead.
Thank your worship again. In order to meet my legislative requirements under Section 17 Sub 3 of the Police Services Act, I will not participate in the discussion or the vote on this matter and I will, uh, turn my camera off, uh, while this matter is being take, dealt with.
Thank you, Counselor Harvey. Um, Counselor Natalie Harris.
Thank you, Mary Lehman. In consultation with the Integrity Commissioner regarding my code obligations and those that arise under the Municipal Conflict Interest Act, I do not have a pecuniary interest in this matter that requires me to abstain from voting on this matter. However, in accordance with my obligations under the Council Committee Code of Conduct and the advice of the Integrity Commissioner, I will not be participating or voting on the foregoing matter.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Counselor Natalie Harris, Madam Clerk. Have Counselor Harvey and Harris's, uh, potential interests been recorded?
Yes, Mary Lehman, they have.
Thank you very much. Uh, on Section D of the General Committee Report, uh, I believe there is an amendment from Counselor Morales, uh, seconded by Counselor Natalie Harris. Go ahead, Counselor Morales. Sorry, uh, did you indicate you did not want to proceed with that one?
Correct.
My apologies. Uh, are there any amendments that, uh, we do wish to move forward with or comments on Section D? Okay, seeing none, I will call the question on Section D. Those in favor of the amendment, or sorry, of Section D, those in favor of the report, please indicate. Opposed? One, Section D carries. Okay, uh, that completes the General Committee Report on the Budget and Business Plan. And, uh, Madam Clerk, unless I'm missing something, I believe we have ourselves a budget. Uh, are there any further, yeah, no kidding, after a little bit of time. Uh, is there anything further on the budget we need to do, Madam Clerk?
Uh, no, Mary Lehman, we are complete.
Good to hear. Okay, um, moving on then, members of council. Um, inquiries, I will touch on, um, on the highlights of the budget as I do every year in the announcements. Um, at this point though, inquiries of staff, Deputy Mayor Ward, any inquiries of staff?
I have none.
Members of council, do you have any, excuse me, do you have any inquiries of staff? Counselor Thompson.
Very quick, Mary Lehman, through you to possibly Ms. Miller. Um, and I know it's, they've been working on it. It was the street signage and there was a response that went through Service Barry on the Dunlop. I was just wondering if I could get just a follow-up on that.
Go ahead.
Through you, Mary Lehman. Uh, Counselor Thompson, are you referring to the yield sign that you had?
Through you, Mayor Lehman, um, Counselor Thompson, are you referring to the yield sign that you had some concerns about, um, on the off-ramp?
No, with all due respect.
That one too.
Yeah, that, that one's been installed and I have pictures to prove it. Uh, uh, no, it was the actual cross streets like, uh, Mary, um, there was a couple of streets along the Big Dig that, uh, had not been erected. So I was just wondering the status of them. And, uh, Counselor Jim Harris did the investigating for me.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Thompson. I'm sorry, um, uh, I think Mr. Arias under in this on the call and perhaps he has the answer to your question.
Go ahead.
Through you, Mayor Lehman, to Counselor Thompson. I think the question is, uh, uh, is the signage on Dunlop, has that been installed? Uh, my understanding is that the contractor continues to address the deficiencies that are outstanding and the signage should be installed, uh, if it's not done already. It should be installed soon is what I meant.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Thompson. Anyone else have inquiries of staff? Okay, seeing none announcements, Deputy Mayor Ward.
I do have one. It'll come as absolutely no surprise to anybody. There's a meeting this Thursday on the community garden proposal for Riverwood Park. Uh, it's at 5:00 PM this Thursday. Um, it's a too long a link, a Zoom link for me to read out, but if you go to berry.ca, you'll find it under community garden. There's a webpage there. Uh, people are asked to register. In fact, you have to register for the meeting. You can register right up to the meeting itself takes place. That's for the proposal to move a community garden from place on Colter Street to Riverwood Park. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Ward. Uh, any other announcements, members of council? Counsel Ailin?
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. Uh, I would like to draw the public's attention, uh, to an important event that's coming up, uh, on February 15th. Uh, and it is a virtual event. Um, and it is a vigil, uh, to honor people who have died due to the toxic drug supply crisis here in the city of Barry. Um, so this virtual vigil will be taking place Monday, February 15th, uh, from 7:00 PM till 8:00 PM. Uh, and the details, uh, can actually be found on the front page of my website, keenan.ca, and there's a link to the, uh, event page on Facebook with details on how to attend, uh, the virtual vigil. Uh, and I'd like to just read a, a piece from the event page, uh, so people can understand exactly what the event is. So join us as we come together as a community to mourn our friends, partners, children and neighbors lost to this ongoing toxic drug crisis. While we can't physically be together, we can light a candle and virtually share pictures, tears, smiles, laughter, grief, warm memories and our collective need for something to change. Uh, so please head to, uh, keenan.ca and click the link on the front page, uh, to find the details on that event. Again, it's Monday, February 15th, 7:00 PM, and it's a vigil to honor the lives we've lost due to the toxic drug supply. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Owen. Counselor Harvey.
Thank you, worship. I, I think it's important to, uh, to make this announcement as there's been much discussion about, uh, trying to get more women involved in politics, uh, as the city's representative, uh, on the Nottawa Sega Conservation Authority. I'm happy to announce that only for the second time in the Conservation Authority's 61-year history that both leadership positions on our board are being held by, uh, by women for this term. Counselor, um, Mary Ann McLeod from the town of, uh, Collingwood was unanimously, uh, selected as our chair. And, uh, Counselor Gail Little from the township of Amaranth was, uh, selected as our vice chair for this term. So really good news. Uh, and I was actually surprised to hear that it was only the second time in 61 years of the, uh, Conservation Authority, uh, in its, its existence that, uh, this has occurred.
Thanks, Counsel Harvey. Uh, are there any other announcements? Counselor Ripma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to remind people that, uh, tomorrow night, um, at 6 o'clock, there's a neighborhood meeting, um, to discuss, uh, a proposal, uh, at 19 Dun Donald. Um, that's actually in Ward Two, but, um, uh, it's right on the border and it affects Ward One as well. So, um, you can, uh, take a look at the city's website and, uh, and register for that, uh, public meeting for, um, tomorrow at, um, at 6 o'clock.
Thank you very much, Counsel Ailin.
Thank you for that, uh, Counselor Ripma. Uh, thank you for drawing attention to that because I know a lot of residents of Ward Two would definitely be interested in that. So I appreciate you bringing that forward.
All right, thanks for that. Uh, any other announcements, members of council? Okay, seeing none. Um, I do have actually quite a few. Um, but, uh, first, as is tradition, I did want to sum up, uh, both for the media watching and the residents who have stuck with us, uh, exactly what ultimately council has approved tonight. Uh, the 0.9% property tax increase that council has given final approval to tonight consists of, uh, 0.67% for city services and service partners and 0.25% for the dedicated infrastructure renewal fund. Um, obviously that is quite a bit lower than where we started and, uh, I think reflects councils' consensus that this was not a year for a significant tax increase, uh, and the year to make, uh, extra and, and in some cases, one-time efforts to reduce, uh, the tax increase as much as possible, while still increasing the amount we spend on fixing roads, infrastructure and moving the community forward. So included in the operating budget is, uh, and increased tonight, uh, the very first bullet I have, increased funding for new permanent traffic calming measures. In recognition that people will be spending more time outdoors, new investments in parks and our waterfront, uh, in more furniture. Uh, plans to modernize parking, moving away from paper parking passes, uh, and moving to digital, new transit routes and buses to serve both growth in the south end and existing routes. Uh, and improving customer experience through mobile apps and smart cards. Uh, new investment in economic development. We did not discuss this much, uh, last Monday or tonight. Uh, but we are investing in economic to, development to position the city for recovery following the pandemic and increase the city's capacity there. And new investments, uh, to address growing demand for customer service and by law enforcement. Um, the capital budget projects, which is always what, uh, people often grab on to, I think, as what's in, uh, the plan for this year. Of course, the new library branch for Holly is a very significant, uh, decision that has been approved by council and in addition to our community. Construction of the Allendale Transit Mobility Hub to coordinate local and regional transit services. Uh, we are moving forward with some planning for a new fire station in the Mapleview and Prince William Way area and looking at the land. Uh, this one will be welcome to many, I'm sure. The completion of Brine Drive from Kaplan to Harvey and the opening of the Harvey Road to Big Bay Point Road Bridge. Uh, that will be a bridge I am really glad to drive over when the day comes. Uh, and the connection to Brian, I think as well, uh, because this is so key to, um, dealing with the longstanding traffic problems in the south end. Expansion of Essa Road from Coughlin to Mapleview, Bell Farm Road. Uh, our favorite worst road in the city or among the worst roads in the city will finally be fully reconstructed, including sidewalks. Um, it has been a long time coming, that project, and it will move forward this year. Uh, and of course, continued focus on maintaining the condition of roads, uh, and stormwater, probably the least exciting of our Barry services, but the most important for the health of our lake. Uh, the increased investment in stormwater management and pond cleanout, uh, directly impacts the health of Lake Simcoe and council's approved an increase in our focus on that, our spending on that. Uh, wastewater rates have been frozen at last year's rate. The water rate will increase by 2.48%, but the total bill impact there is $8.83 for the average customer for the year. Uh, there is more information, of course, on the budget online. There will be more on the amended, uh, budget in the coming days, um, at berry.ca. And I should have, uh, said probably earlier, and I will certainly say again now. We spent more time than most councils have over the years on the budget. Uh, I think there was some very, very good work done here. Um, it was sometimes a challenging debate, but, uh, some very, very good, uh, amendments and, and discussion around them, whether or not they proceeded. Uh, staff work on this for six months before we, uh, get at it for six or 10 or 12 or 15 hours. Uh, and that is led by our CAO and our treasurer, Greg Miller, and his team. Uh, and I want to say thank you to the executive management team, the department heads, and particularly the staff and finance. Um, you know, the, the biggest thing, there's a reporter out there who always asks, what are residents going to get for their money in this budget? And when I first got on council 14 years ago, the answer to that was to be found in a Surlock's bound ledger that was very, very difficult to describe to a resident, uh, because the amount of text for every line was whatever fit in the box at the end of the row of the ledger. Now we have two binders, uh, inches thick with information which describe all of the city services uh, and describe every single dollar spent by every department. And that, uh, is important, of course, for transparency and whether people agree with our spending choices or not. The effort that is made by our staff, uh, to demonstrate, uh, where every single dollar goes. Thanks, Counselor Harris. Um, where every single dollar goes, you can find it. And, um, and I, I think that is, uh, just basic good governance and, uh, it reflects a, a huge amount of effort every year. So thank you to staff. A few other announcements. Congratulations to Tom Dewar, our road operations foreperson. He's attained the Associate Road Supervisor certification. Uh, congratulations to you, Tom. Uh, the city of Barry in partnership with the Health Unit and the Urban Pantry are exploring three new like, new locations for community gardens and are looking for feedback. Uh, there is a virtual survey as mentioned by Deputy Mayor Ward and there are virtual meetings. Um, for each of the proposed locations, uh, Deputy Mayor Ward also already announced the Riverwood Park meeting, which is, uh, Thursday. On February 10th, there is a meeting about Lampman Lane Park and February 11th, the Batto Park. Uh, so that is rear awards four, five and six, um, for new locations for community gardens. For further information, visit berry.ca slash community gardens, all one word. Christmas tree collection. Remember Christmas, who was a month ago today? Um, if you still got your Christmas tree, it's definitely time to get rid of it. Uh, so if you still do have your tree, um, we will be collecting weekly during the month of January. So this is the last week to get rid of it. Uh, please ensure they're free of ornaments and tree stands. Stick them in the snowbank like most people do. Uh, you can also take them to the landfill. Uh, effective January 1st, there have been some changes made to on-street parking and parking pass locations. Please visit berry.ca slash parking, uh, to review those. Of course, the on-street overnight restrictions are still in effect. Uh, and, um, just a reminder, of course, that as part of the province-wide, uh, lockdown, the stay-at-home order and so forth, uh, the city has adjusted our own services, uh, to, um, work remotely wherever possible. Uh, pre-booked appointments are still possible for in-person services if needed at city hall. So you can contact Service Berry at 726-4242. And, uh, for more information on the restrictions, um, and I really, uh, we started tonight on the, on an extremely somber note. Uh, reflecting on and remembering the, uh, lives lost at Roberta Place. And I just have to say in closing, um, the next, uh, week, and I said this in my update today, the next week is the most critical since the beginning of the pandemic. Uh, because we now know that, uh, this more contagious variant of coronavirus is in our community. What we do in Barry now affects what happens across Ontario and, and beyond. Uh, so our own efforts to stop the spread have never been more important than over the coming week. Uh, there is information on what is, um, required by the stay-at-home order on the public health unit's website. And of course, on the Ontario government website, I think everybody knows what to do. This is the most important week to make sure we're all doing it. And I'll just close on that message. Deputy Mayor Ward, the bylaws.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counsel Thompson, that leave be granted to introduce the following bills. These bills be read a first, second and third time this day and finally passed. Bill eight, nine and 10.
Moving Deputy Mayor Ward, seconded by Counsel Thompson, that leave be granted to introduce the following bills. And these bills be read a first, second and third time this day and finally passed. Bill eight, nine and 10. Any comments or questions on the bylaws? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor? Or any opposed? None? That carries. Deputy Mayor Ward, the confirmation bylaw, please.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counsel Thompson, that leave be granted to introduce the following bill. This bill be read a first, second and third time this day and finally passed. Bill 11.
Thank you. It's moved by Deputy Mayor Ward and seconded by Counsel Thompson, that leave be granted to introduce the following bill. And this bill will be read a first, second and third time this day and finally passed. Bill 11. Comments or questions? Seeing none, those in favor of the confirmation bylaw? Any opposed? None. That carries. Members of council, thank you again for your work. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Counsel Natalie Harris, seconded by Deputy Mayor Ward. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. We'll see you next Monday night for general committee.